I hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Willmet Public Schools, District 39, this Monday, March 18th, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll? Here.
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 Thank you. This week, we are recognizing the achievements of two groups of athletes from our winter season. And Kelly Jackson is here with the WJHS wrestlers and basketball players to share their accomplishments and to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thanks for coming.
All right, so on the 5'8" campus, we are always looking for ways for our kids to connect with their school outside of the classroom. And some ways that we do that are through our clubs, at our PTO sponsors, through the musical. Hopefully, some of you got to see the musical this past weekend. Beauty and the Beast was awesome. And specifically through athletics. And we have two teams from our winter season this year that had a lot of great accomplishments. And so first, I'm gonna pass the mic over to Coach Chris Conisek. He's gonna talk a little bit about our 8th grade boys' basketball team.
First of all, we want to thank you guys so much for having us here this evening. I told these guys it's a great honor for them to come and represent their school, their district, in front of you guys. I've been coaching and teaching the district for 17 years. And this is by far, I told them, the moment that I selected the team, that this was the best amount of basketball talent that Willmet has seen in my years here. It was really fun coaching them, as far as when you have that type of talent, to have these guys who have probably all been good friends for a while, to have them mesh together. They all play in a lot of other leagues besides our school team. And then, we went 17-2 this year and got right up to the championship. For the duration of the season, we were only losing about two minutes of the whole season. Unfortunately, we fell three points shy of our goal. But I told these guys, my favorite moment of the whole entire season is after the season was over, the game was over, that we lost in the championship, for them to go and say thank you to their parents. And to see them each go, because I teach at the middle school level, to see them all go thank their parents. I said, "This is gonna be something that you always will remember. And you need to remember to also thank your parents for everything that they do for you as community members, as parents of you guys, because they were there." They really got the school hyped. A lot of the administrators came, former teachers came to see him. It was a pretty awesome sight to see.
It was a great game. Our next athletes that we want to honor are two of our wrestlers. We have a 5th through 8th grade wrestling program, Wolves Wrestling. So the kids come after school pretty much every day and then have tournaments on weekends. And we have two wrestlers that made it to state this year. So Coach Levy.
Hello, thank you very much. This is my second year here being here. I'm very proud of that. Last year, we had a state champion. And this year, we had two state qualifiers and two state place winners. So I want to also thank you for the support, and we need to buy another banner. So first with 8th grade is Eli Polisak, 105 pounds. He finished the year 25-5 and beat multiple state qualifiers along the path. A couple times, he was down to not a lot of time. And he came forward and worked really hard and qualified, then set the goal of placing in state. And he placed fourth. The other wrestler here, before I forget, this is John Lee. He's one of my assistants. He's a graduate of Willmet Junior High, current employee, also. So he's been a great asset. He brings a youthful invigoration. And it's great, because our next gentleman, Ty Stringer, 28-1. And he came about a minute short of his goal, which was to be a state champion. He finished second in state. Part of the thing about wrestling is it's sometimes that end goal isn't met, but it's what you accomplish along the way. And that's what we teach. We have great support from the district, from Kelly, from the people at Highcrest. And we want to say thank you. And we say thank you by producing great kids. And that's what both these kids are, great kids. Thank you.
All right, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much for coming and congratulations on those wonderful accomplishments. You are right to be proud of yourselves, and we are proud of you. This month's artwork on display in the foyer in the boardroom is a wonderful sampling of the 1st through 8th grade student work from all six schools. Every month, we observe Youth Art Month by showcasing the talented student artwork created across the district. Youth Art Month emphasizes the value of art education for all children and encourages quality school programs. I encourage you all to check out the artwork throughout the MEC and behind us when you get a chance. Next up, I will give the standard announcement. I would like to remind everyone that this is a public meeting and all are among neighbors and fellow residents. Appropriate conduct is expected from everyone. We ask that people speak only when called upon, that everyone treat each other kindly and with proper respect, and refrain from distracting behaviors such as loud conversations, cheering, clapping, or booing. Next, I seek a motion to approve the February 25th, 2019 Board of Education and Executive Session Minutes.
I move to approve the February 25th, 2019 Board of Education and Executive Session Minutes.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Are there any comments, errors, omissions to the minutes that anyone would like to? Okay, seeing none, then all those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? Great, the motion carries by general consent. This brings us to our public comments opportunity. This is an opportunity for the audience to address the board. Are there any audience members that would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll move along to our next item, which is board reports. And first, we will do our committee reports, starting with Mr. Panzika with School Finance.
The finance committee met as part of the committee of the whole on March 11th. We discussed a deeper dive on the non-operating funds. The items that deviated by statistically noticeable amount were highlighted. Many of these line items also bring in some revenue which mitigate the expenses. The next round will include these offsetting fees and revenues and will include the next level detail on several of the line items. Earlier this year, we identified the software package Forecast 5 that is capable of generating reports on detailed line items. This software can also do comparisons with other school districts for similar line items for evaluation purposes. Ms. Crispino prepared multiple reports to demonstrate different sets of data and different presentation formats. This led to a detailed discussion on what additional information would be useful. Among other items, future reports will include student population and total dollar numbers. This first round focused on comparison with 15 north short districts. However, the tool allows for other similar districts to be added during the next rounds. The consensus was that this tool will be very valuable in running the operations of the district and in preparing information for analysis by the board. The next meeting will look at reports with the suggested changes and covering some additional areas in more detail.
Thank you very much. And that takes us to facility development and strategy. Ms. Schaff has both.
Right, so the Facilities Development Committee met as a part of the committee of the whole on March 11th, 2019, here at the MEC. We discussed several topics. First, our construction manager reported that we will go out to bid on April 4th for the kindergarten enrichment construction project at Harper. Bids and final recommendations will be back for the April Board of Education meeting with a vote at the same meeting. Secondly, we began a review of large space air conditioning at all of our schools and briefly discussed possible air conditioning projects and related costs. The administration is preparing additional information, and the conversation will continue at the April Committee of the Whole. Finally, we discussed district construction, timing, and priorities for the next two years. As you know, we have a fairly busy construction schedule for the next two summers. And in combination with planned village road construction, both on Locust and Central avenues, we want to make sure we have balanced construction, safety concerns, with summer school and other building use. The next Facilities Committee meeting will take place on Tuesday, April 23rd, at 6:00 PM here at the MEC, right before the board meeting. The Strategy Committee also met on Monday, March 11th, as part of the Committee of the Whole meeting. At the meeting, board members reviewed the work of the March 11th meeting, refining and reorganizing ideas. As you might remember, the board met in February as a first step to help think through and discuss strategic priorities in preparation for the development of a strategic plan with the new superintendent. That's the report.
Great, thank you very much. And that takes us to our liaison reports. And both of them, both WICCE and IASB, are with Ms. Sternwiler.
The WICCE Advisory Board met today. And we approved the draft 2020 fiscal year budget and the draft 2020 budget calendar and guidelines, as well as WICCE projected expenditures for fiscal year 2020 and the annual summary of projected costs for fiscal year 2020. And the next meeting of the board is scheduled for Monday, May 20th, at 4:00 PM at the MAC. And that's the WICCE update. And then, actually, there's no ISB news to report this month. But I do have Ed Red news.
Oh, okay.
We received a call to action, actually. And the call to action was to contact members of the Senate Education Committee to ask for a no vote on SB 1189 Physical Education Bill. And the physical education mandate and waiver request is posted for a hearing in the Senate Education on Tuesday, March 19th. I'm sure Tracy will probably have some information on this, she may or may not. Okay. But in terms of us, the reason that this was significant to us was the bill made changes, the major changes that it made for us was that, well, it requested for physical education that for physical education may remain in effect for a period not to exceed two school years, rather than five school years, like other mandate waivers, and may be renewed no more than two times upon application by an eligible applicant. And physical education courses must be provided for an elementary school pupil for a minimum of 150 minutes per week. And for middle school, junior high school or high school pupils, a minimum of 225 minutes per week. We, our district was not opposed to the mandated daily PE, but the mandated 45 minutes is where the problem arises. And currently, our PE at the upper grades is 40 minutes per day. And if the law were to pass, we'd need to review and change our entire schedules to accommodate these changes. So our district, Ray, has already submitted a witness slip against this bill, along with most other districts are not agreeing with this. So that is my update.
Okay, thank you very much. And then our last report is the legislative update.
Can I ask a question? I'm just curious about this one. And it's to Ray, I think mostly, but interested in your opinion. So why was this bill submitted? Because I think I understand why we're, you know, not for it, right? Because it messes with our schedule. But I'm curious about why.
There's a lot of back and forth in Illinois with respect to laws and flexibility. So we've been granted more flexibility in the last year or so, and then now it's starting to tighten up again. So they're trying to...
The problem is they're trying to take away the flexibility now.
Right, that we were...
And everyone is wanting to keep the flexibility because they need it. So people aren't arguing that PE is necessary. They're just saying they want to be able to schedule PE as they need...
Let us define how we want to do that ourselves.
I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, are there districts in Illinois that don't have enough PE? That very well could be true. Yes, okay. Thanks.
Great, and Ms. Kearney with the legislative update.
Thank you. I'd say roll up your sleeves, kick up your boots, pour a cup of coffee. It's a long legislative report. The legislature has definitely been very busy since our last meeting with a flurry of hot-button bills, both out of the House and Senate, having moved through committee and that can be called for a vote at any time. There are several, but there are four particular that weren't highlighting. One is commonly referred to as the five-clock-hour minimum pending legislation, minimum hours pending legislation. For a little background, for many years, school funding was based on school districts providing at least a minimum of a five-clock-hour school day. With the adoption of the evidence-based funding bill that passed in 2017, this provision was deleted. Focus has now shifted to more, to be a more outcomes-based philosophy, where counting of individual minutes of seat time by students is not as higher priority as measuring the academic achievement of a student. Students learn in many different ways. Senate Bill 28 would revert back to the practice of defining a school day as a five-clock-hour minimum school day and would cause, sorry, and would cause school districts to forfeit this new flexibility and opportunity for innovation. This bill and its amendments have moved through the Senate Education Committee and be called for a vote for at any time. IASB also recommended, at the end of all this, that all school, more board members engage and contact their legislatures for their position on these. Also, the minimum salary for teachers is real hot right now. Bill, this bill was approved last year by the Illinois General Assembly that would increase the minimum teacher salary to 40K per year. However, it did not survive a gubernatorial veto, and the measure died. This year, the proposal is resurrected in the form of Senate Bill 10 on the Senate side and House Bill 2078 on the House side. Under the bill's minimum salary increase would be phased in in four-year increments, coming to a minimum of $40,000 for year 23, 2023, 2024. Enactment of Senate Bill 10 or House Bill 2078 would bring public schools closer to standard statutory salary scales, as well as consume a significant share of any increase in funding that came to school districts from the new evidence-based funding bill that was passed in 2017. The legislative change would require a minimum salary, of which at least half of Illinois' 850 school districts are now below, would eventually, would undoubtedly be a ripple effect throughout the entire salary schedule if one of the bills were to be enacted. And more importantly, many believe it usurps the local authority of local school boards and teachers to negotiate salary and benefits based on the various wants and needs of teachers, the community, and the district. SB 10 and House Bill 2078 are both pending on their respective floors and could be called for a vote for at any time, almost through. I won't go through the physical education bill, as Ellen did a nice job with that. Again, those two have both moved through their respective committees in both their respective houses and could be called for a vote at any time. And finally, the big one, school district consolidation. Discussions are starting regarding the forced consolidation of units of school governments, including school districts. Got one in the House, House Bill 1838, and Senate Bill 353 or vice versa, I'm not sure, would create the School District Efficacy Commission that would identify before May of 2020, in a year, no less than 25% of school districts in Illinois that will be required to hold a referendum to consolidate in the next general election. That's pretty much it. Those are all real four that would have definite impact and take a lot of local control out of our hands. And in any case, we're all encouraged to engage and connect. And all IASB opposes all four of those bills.
Great, thank you very much. Did you have any comments on any of those, Ray? Just out of the effects on us or anything like that? Okay. Yeah, I think that's, yeah, mostly. Okay, well, that takes us to information items.
Hey, Mark, sorry. Could we discuss this in committee? Like whether or not we agree with all these IASB positions?
Yeah, let's put the...
No, no, yeah, that's right.
But I think John's saying, you know, we've, actually, this is to your point from earlier, Tracy, which is that we got into the IASB, we're being more active now, and we should know where we stand on these things. And, you know, aside from the fact that you gave a great report, I don't think we all know where we stand yet. And so maybe in committee, we should go and take a look at it and decide where we stand as a board. So if we could, we could look at that at the next one? I think that's great. Good. Next up, information items. Go ahead, Ray.
Yes, we had no written communication this month. However, we do have two administrative announcements. On Sunday, March 10th, the annual Gold Green Willmet Environmental Fair was held at Michigan Shores. This year's theme was Waste Not, Want Not. And all of our schools were represented. The District 39 Green Team's teachers, administrators, and parents were present as we displayed a mini composting station, engaged attendees in making tote bags out of T-shirts, and showcased our sustainability efforts. And this month, we received a FOIA from Selena Garcia seeking possible contracts for outsourced vendor custodial services, and we had none.
All right, that takes us to our strategic plan updates.
Yes, last September, the board approved our 2018-19 strategic plan. This executive summary report will provide a mid-year update on two new initiatives, school nutrition and differentiated instruction. Katie Lee and the administrative team have this report.
Thank you, Dr. Luckner. We will begin with school nutrition. District 39 is committed to providing a well-balanced school lunch program. And this year, a school nutrition committee comprised of parents, staff, and administrators have been established to review the District 39 lunch program. The committee set out to gather information from parents and students through a survey, and the members wanted to know if parents and students were satisfied with current food options, felt the options met nutritional standards, and whether the options were desirable for students. Based on the survey results, the committee created subgroups to research four topics: nutritional quality, nutrition education, lunchtime, vegetables, fruits, and proteins. And the committee will have two additional meetings this year, and they intend to send out a second survey to gather detailed input on all four topics. For differentiated instruction, even though it has been adopted practice for more than two decades in District 39, it was very important for us to review this practice and so that the resources that we have are best utilized and services support students. So the Department of Curriculum Instruction has worked collaboratively with administrators, differentiation support teachers, and other staff members to reflect on current practices and identify some needs. So at first glance, there is a need for more frequent professional development. And this year, the principals have provided time for that during their staff meetings, where teachers shared effective strategies and how they have been applied within the classroom during those staff meetings. Also, either a principal or a differentiation support teacher have covered classes to support peer observations as a way of professional development opportunities. Another need was revealed through feedback from a variety of sources. And teachers needed support in mathematics instruction and a delivery model for that instruction that was aligned district-wide. So the administration will continue to seek input and feedback regarding the expressed need for more math-focused support and collaborate to provide a more clearly-defined support system for teachers. This is truly a brief executive summary, so we are happy to answer any questions that you may have on the two new initiatives.
Great, thank you very much. Do we have questions? Yeah?
I have one. Thank you for this report. I appreciate it. I think we all do. So I'm gonna focus on the food. Would it be helpful, because we're actually reviewing later in this meeting, I think, our board policies? And there's a board policy that relates to food. I don't know if you had a look at that one. And I'm gonna bring it up later, so I might as well bring it up now. Is, there's a sentence here that says, "The cost of meals shall be a set price, which will encourage maximum participation and keep financial operations on a break-even basis." And so the thing I would ask is, do we need the break-even basis? Like, is that something that needs to be a board policy? Would the flexibility of maybe not being break-even be something that would be welcomed? You know, something to consider as far as increasing quality?
We're definitely break-even, and we like that a lot.
I know, I know you do. But it's something I would like the board to consider, even though we are hugely deferential to you, Ray.
After we pay for fees.
Yes, that's a good point, Tracy. But it's something I thought I'd bring up. Thing is how, you know, cost and quality tend to sadly, in the real world, go together. So I figured we might as well have this discussion.
So I guess the, so I want to make sure I'm understanding. So there's, there may be two parts to this. One is whether or not being break-even on a school lunch program is a board policy-level commitment.
Yeah.
Right, and so we can certainly discuss that. And then the other, which might be the driving factor, is, well, if we didn't have to, you know, if we didn't have to be break-even, would that change our quality significantly? Would that give us more flexibility to do things? And I think that piece of it plays into this report. Am I hearing you correctly?
You are translating well, thank you. I always appreciate it.
So I guess then, I guess what I'm hearing is, I wouldn't expect you to be able to answer now, but as you go through this survey, one thing to consider is, is the financial constraint of being break-even a significant constraint in terms of our options for nutrition?
I was just gonna say, as we go to do our second survey in April, those are some of the things that we are thinking about as far as cleaner ingredients and the cost increase. And we do intend to survey the parents as well to try and get a better feel for, you know, kind of what the elasticity is. I don't know if that's the right word.
I think it is, exactly the right word.
So we are trying to gather more information, and that is something that we are looking at.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions, comments, thoughts? Yeah, go ahead. Oh, sorry, Alice, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask if you surveyed the students too, to find out their preferences? Or was this just with the parents at this point?
We did survey parents, and we surveyed the elementary, Highcrest, and junior high. So we got a lot of initial data, and we are taking that data. We've met in the subcommittees, and we're gonna go back and kind of do a deeper dive for the second survey to kind of hone in on some of the points a little further.
So with the students themselves, or...?
The students and the parents.
And the parents, okay.
Because the students are the ones that are eating the food every day.
Or not eating the food is what I was thinking. So some kind of survey...
And the parents have to pay for it, so...
Right, right, right. I was thinking, you know, is there some, I'm sure there's some element to this where you're actually looking at what gets thrown out or what the waste is in the cafeteria so you understand what the children are eating and what they're not eating? And, you know, how are different choices to improve our lunch program, you know, are being received by the students?
Right, and I think once we kind of come up with a plan, it's gonna be a matter of trying out the new food with the, you know, cleaner, healthier ingredients and, you know, seeing if the kids like it or not and surveying that. And it'll probably be something that we'll have to fine-tune as we do everything as we go on.
Right, absolutely. Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, Ray. I had two questions on the other topic.
I had two questions on the other topic. So differentiated instruction. So the first question is, I know we have 25 to 28-plus students per class. Does that make it difficult for the teacher to differentiate across this whole spectrum? I mean, is there issues from a teaching standpoint? Is there issues that we do less differentiation because we have a fairly large classroom size? How does classroom size relate to differentiation?
I just want to add that 25 to 28 is at the upper grades, not the elementary. And then we have more, you know, tracks at the upper grades as well, so it makes it much easier. But go ahead, you can finish that.
Right. So, you know, of course, any teacher-student ratio would have an impact on, you know, what you dedicate as far as your instructional approach. However, I think the margins that the district has set is very appropriate for our population, and so I expect that the teachers are finding it to be okay. I think we need to support them a little bit more as far as, you know, kind of reviving some of the strategies and the approaches and making sure that they feel like they have all of the materials and resources that they need. But otherwise, I think as far as defining and differentiating instruction for the students, it should be manageable.
But having like accelerated math options, that's a much easier way to differentiate instruction, so it's less challenging at the upper grades. If we address this math issue that came up this year, and we look at how we're going to be targeting maybe that for K4, we might actually see more kids that are participating in the accelerated programs, which again, makes differentiation easier in that subject.
And that's the kind of information I'd like to hear a little bit more detail on, because at the surface level, you know, we're asking teachers to handle a fairly large spectrum of students, and something gives either the teachers' time or the ability to differentiate efficiently. So some of those type ideas are the type of thing I want to hear a little bit more detail on.
Yes, we will share more details. We're reflecting right now on the delivery model of services and supports that the teachers get and also what the students get, K8. And so I think as we refine our thoughts a little bit more, we'll be able to present to you, here is what we recommend for a K8 progression as far as delivery models.
Okay, great. And the next one, I'm not as up-to-date as I would have liked for the question, but I know when I was moving into the district, I looked at our website, and we have a great website, and it mentions differentiation. But it read more like a vision, you know, "We believe in differentiation. We think it's important. We do a really good job at it." And I know once or twice I've looked back at it, but I'm not in the last couple of years, so I'm not sure if we've had a chance to change that. If we're taking another look, refreshing, as you mentioned, it's been two decades that we've been talking about differentiation. I think you... If you haven't, I think, and I apologize because I haven't looked at it in the last year or so, but if you haven't looked at that statement, if you could look at it and see if it could be a little bit more directive and a little bit more instructive, because it is one of the things that parents do look at when they're trying to decide which community, and we know we do a good job. I'm not sure that that statement that I had read the last time I read it reflects that.
We do have a full... Oh, I'm sorry. I don't want to... We do have a full page that defines differentiated instruction, and if... We'll review the information on there if there's more specific examples that we can provide. Definitely happy to do so, but the definition is there.
I want to differentiate, because there are two different... We're using the word simultaneously for two different things. One is that we differentiate instruction for every child, and we use data to inform that, and we use our Wind Time K4 for all different kids, but we're talking about a specific program that tends to target accelerated kids, students. So I want to make sure that we... So if you see something generic on the website that talks about how we differentiate for all, that's true, but this is a much more focused investigation of our...
And then the follow-up is that we should take credit for that.
Yes.
We should have that displayed on the website more...
Correct. Or maybe we change the name. I'm sorry. I just said that.
I didn't bring that up. He did.
I understand.
But I think there's an opportunity there, so, okay. Thank you.
That is not a bad point. It gets confusing. I mean, if you're going to call it the same thing, that's very confusing.
Other questions or comments? Just had... John, did you have... Oh, no, you're good. Okay. I just have one or two. I can't figure out what it... How many it is as I go here. The... I know that what we're doing here is doing baselining on these, and so what I want to make sure that we're including in our baselining, not just implicitly but explicitly, is what are the kinds of metrics and goals that we're trying to optimize, maximize, minimize, whatever the heck we're doing with them, right? So for instance, implicitly, when I look at the Food Survey 1, we're surveying parents, students, et cetera, and that says to me that there's an implicit desire to say, okay, well, if we can improve, like our metric may be improving those survey results. I don't know if it will be or not, but that's one potential metric that it sounds like we're going towards. I want to make sure that we're thinking pretty clearly about that. And then again, this is not... This is for going forward, right? But, you know, I think somebody, maybe it was John, but somebody suggested for the nutrition one, that we, you know, not just do people like it, but how well are we meeting what we're teaching the kids as good nutrition in our curriculum, right? And so how well does our curriculum match up with our food service offerings, those kinds of things? So that's another potential metric. I'm not saying that's the right one, but I'm just saying I want to make sure that we're thinking explicitly about the metrics. Likewise, on the differentiation part, I would... I'm guessing that an implicit goal there is growth of students, especially at the top end, given what Ray just said about how we use differentiation. That's why I mentioned the top end. But I just want to make sure that as we go forward, we start to define these things explicitly.
Yes, definitely. I think it is definitely, as far as the differentiated instruction goal, and where we're identifying the math-specific, it would be meeting the needs of all students, but in particular, how do we support the students that need advanced work?
Great.
I just want to reiterate what you said, because it really makes a lot of sense. Just like we did for, you know, student attendance, we just had a high-level metric that was easy to monitor, and we can be identifying very high-level metrics for both of these.
I think that's great. I think one of the really nice things, and you've heard me say it before, is that, you know, it helps the board keep at the board level, which is where we need to be, and it helps you all be able to give us a really clear message about, okay, here's what we're trying to get done, and then you know better than we about how it needs to get done, and so that helps keep us in the... All playing the right roles. So I think it's really useful.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you for the report, and thank you all for all the work. I know there's a lot of people behind you who did work that didn't speak, but that's good. All right, what's next? Annual business?
Yes. Next, we have our fiscal year 2020 Non-Operating Funds tentative budget. We had a nice review with Frank from the School Finance Committee, so I'm going to turn this over to Ellen Crispino, because she has this report.
Thank you, Dr. Lechner. The first of the three non-operating funds we looked at was the Debt Service Fund. The Debt Service Fund is used to pay for debt obligations, and there's a small increase in fiscal year '20 of $47,000, which will be used for previously-approved debt service payments. We've also budgeted one transfer from the Operations and Maintenance Fund to the Debt Service Fund in the amount of $800,000 to cover the debt certificate payments for fiscal year 2020. The second fund we have is the Capital Projects Fund. This fund is used to pay for costs related to construction and improvements. It includes approved construction at High Crest and estimated construction costs for Harper's Kindergarten enrichment program. The cost for Harper Construction will be presented to the board for approval in April. The third fund is the Life Safety Fund. It can only be used for life safety work approved by ISBE. The 10-year life safety study was completed in fiscal year '18. A list of projects that qualifies life safety were identified and submitted to ISBE for approval. There is no activity in this fund for fiscal year '20 as the identified projects will be completed using operating funds. There's a projected fund balance in the non-operating fund's total budget at June 30th, 2020, of $1.7 million, as reflected in Exhibit D of our report. As you mentioned, the School Finance Committee reviewed the tentative budgets. Are there any questions?
Any questions from board members? Okay, and just so people at home know, we review this a lot in our committee meetings, and that's why there's no questions. Next up, board policy review.
Yes, as we shared with the board last Friday, we have 10 new policies for first read. I've gotten lots of excellent feedback from board members already, and Dr. Guwacki has this report.
So we have received a lot of feedback already. If there's additional feedback that we need to attend to, that would be great to have now.
Thoughts from the board? I guess, first of all, we should mention, we'll need a process to discuss and make a decision on whether we do the balanced budget for food. So maybe let's bring that up in the next committee meeting too, or did you have a thought on that?
I was just going to wonder if we should save that for the next... We have two more committees at the halls, one early in the month, one later in the month, maybe the one later or the one in early?
So then we would be... I'm okay, it's up to the board. I would say the only logistics piece is the one later is just before the board meeting, so that would make it logistically a little difficult, but...
Easily done.
So you're thinking first one now, or... Okay. Board members, are we okay with that? We'll discuss that at the first one? Okay. Great. Others?
Can I ask what the feedback was? What are we referring to?
I know there were some grammatical errors, but Heather has...
So I just received some of the corrections, so I'll get them to you as soon as I can. Thank you.
Excellent. Other thoughts on board policy review? Okay, and Heather, you ask us usually to get it to you by Friday or so. Is that an appropriate deadline this week as well?
That would be great.
Okay, so if you have further comments, please try and get them to Heather by Friday. Okay, that takes us to public comments. This is the second opportunity for the audience to address the board. Are there any audience members who would like to speak at this time? See one. Please remember to state your name, your community of residence, and also I'll remind you that you're allowed three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Erin Stone, and I live in Willmet. By my calculation, this is the last complete meeting of this type for Tracy and Alice, and I want to stand and thank both of you for all of your many years of service to the district. You've both exhibited a lot of hard work and passion on behalf of our community, and particularly on behalf of our kids, and I really appreciate it. And I know that both of you have been working hard long before you joined the school board. About eight years ago, I was watching one of these meetings at home, and I remember Alice getting up on behalf of the D39 Ed Foundation and advocating for some event that had just happened and that she was volunteering for at the time. And four years ago, I remember meeting Tracy in the entryway of High Crest when my then oldest child was about to embark on her first luau madness, and I was there to serve pizza, and you were in charge of the whole thing. So I know that both of you have been working a long time for the kids in this district, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we will echo those thoughts as a board next time as well. Any other comments from the public? Great. Seeing none, let's move on to our action items. The next order of business is the consent agenda for action items of this month. Are there any items that the board would like pulled from the consent agenda? And just for the sake of logistics, I would say I don't think we need to pull the first read of that policy yet, but we may wind up pulling it later, if that's okay with you, John? Okay. Anything else that anybody would like to pull? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Penzica, please proceed with the motion.
I move to approve the personnel report dated March 18, 2019. I move to approve the resolution authorizing the honorable dismissal of teachers. I move to approve as first reading of the Board of Education Policy 4:63, quality purchasing; 4:70, building and grounds management; 4:80, periodic audit; 4:90, school activity funds; 4:95, petty cash; 4:100, insurance management; 4:110, transportation; 4:115, bus warm-up; 4:130, food services; and 4:140, waiver of student fees. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between February 26, 2019, and March 18, 2019, in the following amounts. Educational fund, $368,908.82. O&amp;M fund, $142,480.4. Transportation fund, $175,330.17. Capital projects, $39,229. Tort fund, $3,412. For a total, all funds of $729,360.3. I move to approve the manual checks issued between February 26, 2019, and March 18, 2019, in the following amounts. Educational fund, $565,370.97. O&amp;M fund, $2,850.68. Transportation fund, $109.31. For a total, all funds of $568,330.96.
Thank you very much. The motion has been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Johnson's ready?
Yes.
Tracy Curry?
Yes.
Penzica?
Yes.
Al Shad?
Yes.
Lisa Shatterfield?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the yeses have it, and the motion is carried. That brings us to our conference items. Is there any old business? Any new business? Any good in welfare?
Yes.
Okay, go for it.
I was able to attend the Go Green event a week and a half ago now, I guess, and as usual, it was a very well-run event. It was also very well-represented by District 39. There are a lot of tables. I had a chance to interact and talk to several of the teachers and some of the students that represented our school very well. Every year, Go Green matures a little bit, and this year, I think the depth of the presentations, the quality of the work was... I was going to say better, but I mean, better. And I think District 39 helped bring up that average, so I think we did a good job.
Great, thank you very much. Any other good in welfare? Okay, seeing none. May I seek a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss collective bargaining and to review executive session minutes and executive session recordings for disposal in accordance with Policy 2:20.
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss collective bargaining and review executive session minutes and executive session recordings for disposal in accordance to Policy 2:20.
And may I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Johnson's ready?
Yes.
Tracy Curry?
Yes.
Frank Penzica?
Yes.
Al Shad?
Yes.
Lisa Shatterfield?
Yes.
Martha Steen?
Yes, the motion carries, and we are now adjourned to executive session at the highly typical time of 7:47.